All right, everyone, I think we are ready to start. First of all, I just want to thank all of the attendees this evening for joining. This is the COVID-19 Special Committee Town Hall, certainly brought on and coordinated by the members of the City Council to hear your thoughts and concerns relative to the COVID-19 pandemic as far as the city stands and where the city is headed. When, first, I'll start by introducing myself. I am Marcus Williams, the President of the City Council. And conceptualizing this special subcommittee, I thought it was appropriate to make sure that we had a beat on every action that the city was taking as relative to the COVID-19 pandemic. The focus of this special committee has ranged from housing insecurity to food instability, realizing that the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated a lot of the issues that we have already had and been plagued with within the city of Springfield to some degree. I just really want to thank the efforts made, and I should add the word collaborative effort made, to work alongside the city and the administration with a special nod to the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Commissioner Colton, who cannot join us this evening, but has been very proactive in providing updates on a weekly basis to this special committee as it relates, again, to what the city is doing to combat the pandemic, all the way down to vaccine accessibility to the residents of Springfield. I will say that the special committee has been an advocate for vaccine accessibility through our municipality from every angle of it, making sure that first, you know, sure thing that the Black and Brown communities were not forgotten as has been the case throughout the country and some areas, all the way down to inviting folks who, again, are a part of that collaborative effort to combat this pandemic, which is certainly the biggest health crisis in all of our lifetimes. So I just, again, want to thank you all for joining us. Thank you for the committee and Mr. Chair, Councilman Letterman, for putting this on in tandem with the rest of the City Council and my colleagues. I also want to thank, you know, of course, our factions of the city, all the way down from Health and Human Services to Finance to Business and Economic Development, because, again, it really took a group effort to put the resources out there for our folks to be able to reach, and that's what it's all about. And we have to make sure that we are doing it not in silos, but as a unit, and that certainly was the focus of this special subcommittee. So without further ado, I will pass it to Councilor Letterman. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to start this off, and I look forward to hearing your questions and comments.
Thank you so much, President Williams, and thank you to everybody who has already joined us today and who will join us in the hour ahead. As the President said, my name is Jesse Letterman. I'm an at-large City Councilor, and since the beginning of the year with the President's support, I've had the honor of serving as Chairman of the COVID-19 Response Committee. As the President said, the COVID-19 Response Committee has really come together to provide a platform for councilors and residents to be able to engage with the administration as well as with the higher levels of government and to cross-collaborate across the community to advocate for the needs of the city of Springfield as we continue to make it through the COVID-19 pandemic and all of the impacts that were associated and continue to be associated with that. As the President said, you know, this group was very involved in advocating for vaccine access, very involved in advocating for housing protections for individuals and homeowners across the city of Springfield and tenants, and has really been fortunate to be able to work closely with community organizations in our community that are doing that work. But as we now look ahead, even though we know that there is still work to be done, we know that the threat of COVID-19 is not completely gone in our community. We also know that we are seeing many restrictions lifted, and we are starting to think about how can we make sure that the city of Springfield has a strong and equitable recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. So we wanted to provide an opportunity tonight for residents and members of the business community in the city of Springfield to be able to share your thoughts, your experiences, and your ideas for the future. We know that Springfield is going to be very shortly receiving, really, an unprecedented amount of recovery funds from the federal government, which we'll talk about in a moment. And we really want to hear from you about how we can make sure to leverage our resources and truly invest to make our community come out even better than we were before the pandemic. We know, even before the pandemic, there were many challenges, and because of that, we want to make sure that we can address those that were exacerbated so severely by COVID-19. So I want to start by just saying really quickly a little bit about how tonight will work, and then we'll hear some introductions and move right into our testimony for the evening. We are joined by a number of City Councilors this evening. We are also joined by some of our department heads. We're going to hear some brief introductions from councilors, and then we're going to hear some very brief updates from our department heads that are with us so that you can get an idea of kind of what has happened so far and then what, you know, the city and the administration is sort of thinking of in the weeks and months ahead. And then we will move right to taking testimony. When it comes time to take testimony, we would just ask that you raise your hand using the Raise Hand function, and we will call upon you one by one to come forward and share your testimony. We would ask you just be mindful that thus far we have about 30 folks in attendance who may be sharing testimony, and we expect that number will grow over the next hour. So just be mindful of the time, and hopefully you'll be able to share your insights with us. But I want to move to some introductions with the councilors that are with us, and we're not going any particular order, just in the order that I see you on the screen. So we'll begin with an introduction from Councilor Melvin Edwards.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman, and thank you all in attendance. I am eager to hear the ideals from our constituents. I am Melvin Edwards, obviously, the City Councilor voted in from Ward 3, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, to listen, and hopefully to learn. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Edwards. Councilor Allen? Sorry, Councilor Allen.
Here we go. Here we go. Unmuted now. Hi, everybody. Thanks, Councilor Letterman and Councilor Williams for getting us started here. I'm Tim Allen, Councilor from Ward 7, representing Ward 7, and happy to be here tonight to hear what the people have to say about things we can do post-COVID or at the end of COVID here. So nice to be here. Thank you.
And Councilor Davila, we're glad you're able to be with us.
Thank you, Councilor Letterman. I'm glad to be here too. I apologize. I had my schedule screwed up, but realized I was able to be here today, so I ran to be here today. Welcome to everybody. Welcome to all the panelists. Victor Davila, the Councilor for Ward 6. I am eager myself also to hear what proposals and what ideas are there tonight for the use of the money that is coming in and how we continue to recuperate to improve our city post-pandemic, post-COVID-19. So I'll thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Councilor Fenton?
Thank you, Councilor Letterman. Looking forward to the presentation. Want to just say anecdotally that I got my second COVID vaccine shot today at the Eastfield Mall, and I'm feeling great. So if you haven't had a chance to go out and get your inoculation, please do it.
Thank you so much, Councilor Fenton. Councilor Ramos?
Thank you, Councilor Orlando Ramos, City Councilman from Ward 8, as well as State Representative for the 9th District. Good to be here with all of you, and I look forward to hearing from Marcus Sidoz as to how we can do better as a government and what we can, you know, share some ideas as to what we can do moving forward to make the city more resilient to, you know, post-pandemic. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Councilor. And Councilor Curran?
Councilor Sean Curran here. Thank you very much for having this meeting, and I look forward to hearing the new ideas.
Excellent. And I know that Councilor Gomez from Ward 1 is working to log on right now, but we're going to go ahead and move to some brief statements by some of the department heads that are with us. As Councilor President Williams alluded, we were hoping to be able to have Commissioner Colton Harris with us. She did have an emergency that came up and was unable to attend, but I want to echo him in really thanking her for her leadership and all of the work that she has done in the last year and with this committee. We certainly would be in a very different place as a city, I truly believe, without Commissioner Colton Harris and her department. So we are very grateful to them, and I have some updates that I can share later from her department. But right now, we're going to hear briefly from the Chief Administrative and Financial Officer, TJ Plant. TJ, thanks for being here.
Thanks, Councilor Letterman. My name is TJ Plant. I'm the Chief Administrative and Financial Officer for the city. Do all the finance and administrative functions to help the mayor run the city. So when the pandemic hit, we've been through a number of tornadoes and snowstorms and all these FEMA-related disasters. My goal was just to track the expenses and to maximize the reimbursements that we get from the state and federal government. To date, we have spent since the start of COVID, $40.7 million in response to COVID. That is $9.3 million that we currently have in our deficit spending account and $31.4 million on a variety of grants that we've received to date. In addition to the expenses, we have lost $9.6 million worth of revenue, $4.8 billion from the start of fiscal year '21 till now, and then $4.9 or so from the beginning of the pandemic until the end of fiscal year '20. And so the big thing that's coming up for us to keep an eye on is we have the American Rescue Plan money that's coming our way. That is $93.8 million sent directly from the federal government to the city of Springfield to be used on economic development, job creation, business support, nonprofit, small business, housing, public health, resident support, social equity, infrastructure, all those things that we can use to be transformative for the city of Springfield. Happy to take questions and provide any information that's needed to the Council of the public.
Thank you, TJ. We're also joined by the Economic Development Director and Planning Director, Tim Sheehan. Tim, do you want to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about what you have in store?
Sure, Counselor. Tim Sheehan, I'm the Chief Development Officer for the city. I run the Development Services Division within my division. We handle both the Community Development Block Grant and the ESG funding that comes into the city, as well as HOPWA, which is Housing Assistance to People with AIDS. At the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, Congress passed the CARES Act. Under that act, those entitlement grants ultimately brought forward $7.5 million into the city to deal with the crisis as it was at that time last spring. That $7.5 has been fully committed by the city at this point. It has provided housing security. It has provided rapid rehousing for the homeless population. It's provided small business development funding and direct assistance to small businesses, as well as loan support and public service as well. So I think we've done a pretty good job in terms of managing the city's response to the immediate crisis as it was. But now we're confronted with an extraordinary opportunity with the American Rescue Plan, and it's an opportunity for us to really take a look at how the city is going to utilize this funding in a meaningful way that ultimately provides building blocks for decades to come. I think the question, you know, that's confronting all of us, and I think the public is an important part of it, is to understand that our deployment of it is going to be done in a smart manner and an equitable manner going forward. And I kind of look at it in three different strategies of stabilize, strategize, and organize. And obviously, the public is a big component to the organization component of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. And finally, we are also joined by the Director of Parks, Building, and Recreation, Patrick Sullivan. We thought it was important to hear a little update on open space in the city and what is available in the summer months ahead. So Pat, if you want to go ahead and share an update from your department?
Great. Thank you, Counselor. It's been a hectic 15 to 16 months. First, I just want to thank the staff of both facilities and parks. We worked through the crisis. No one had stayed home, and we did over $1.5 million in upgrades to our school buildings. And I want to thank the mayor, TJ, and the finance team and the School Committee and City Council for all your support in getting us to the point where we're at today. Why we have managed the COVID crisis in our buildings, we've also kept our construction projects moving forward. So right now, we have actively $16 million in improvements in parks across the city. Some of the highlights are Emilyville Park, Kedefett Park, Walsh Park. We started design on Loon Pond. We've written grants for Greenleaf Park, and we're still waiting on the Duggan Park Grant and the Forest Park Horticulture Grant, but we're being told those are very favorably as well. We're also working very hard on the CPA grants with our neighborhood councils. We probably have about $3 million in projects, and the CPA is going, plus we've put forward 12 to 15 grant applications in this next round. I've worked very closely with Helen Colton Harris, and we feel that by mid-June, when the governor lifts his restrictions, we will no longer need the COVID plans for our park permits. And so we're slowly getting back into opening things up. Our sports teams are now active. We're looking at doing movies in the park this summer. We hope to do the concerts in the park starting late August, early September. So we're going to learn how to move forward in managing COVID, but at the same time, have our city open for business. And it's been an honor working with all the cabinet as we manage this. It was really, when you look back, everyone just worked so well together to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pat. And we are just about to move into public testimony and questions for the town hall, but we are joined now by Counselor Gummer Cindo Gomez from Ward 1. So I just wanted to give Counselor Gomez a quick moment to introduce himself as well. And so Counselor Gomez, if you want to go ahead and unmute, we'd welcome you to make an introduction at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. I finally found it in spam. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your help. Thank you for hosting this meeting. I think it's very important for us to listen from our people out there to see how they're doing and their thoughts. So I'm just thrilled to be here and just hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Gomez. And that leads us to what we are really here for, which is to hear from all of you that have joined us. I've always really subscribed to the philosophy that the opportunity to interact with your local government should be often and should be easy. And so that is what we're hoping to provide here this evening. I see we have about 34 folks in attendance so far. So what we'd ask at this time is if you would like to provide some testimony to the committee, that you just raise your hand using the Raise Hand function. And we will call upon you. At the time that you are called upon, our partners at Focus Springfield, who we want to really thank for their assistance in helping us to move this type of an event forward in such a positive manner, especially Brendan Holland and Steve Carey as well. And so once you are called upon, they will bring you in so that folks can see you live, and we will welcome you at that time. So the first person with their hand up that we would like to call upon is Diane Scherer. And while we bring Diane in, I will say I see some folks putting testimony in the chat. We absolutely would welcome that, but please also be aware that you can submit written testimony to me at jletterman@springfieldcityhall.com, and we'll share that around. And we also would welcome you to bring that live as well. So Diane, are you with us? There you are.
Am I? Okay, there you are. Okay. Yes, thank you very much. And I want to thank the councilors for hosting this meeting as well that welcomes the community to share our stories and information regarding our experiences with the COVID-19 pandemic. As Counselor Letterman said, my name's Diane Scherer. I'm a registered nurse, and I work for the Massachusetts Nurses Association in the Division of Legislation in Western Massachusetts. I have submitted written testimony for the committee, which also provides a link to the M&amp;A website that provides detailed information about the COVID-19 pandemic experiences from nurses throughout the Commonwealth. The survey results confirm the experiences reported by our nurses who work in healthcare facilities in Western Massachusetts, including the Springfield area. In general, the healthcare system was woefully underprepared for the pandemic because of years of cost-cutting on the backs of patients, nurses, and other healthcare workers. Executives have used a corporate just-in-time staffing model to boost profits and the pay of top hospital executives while leaving nurses to care for too many patients at once, putting patients at higher risk for injury, error, and lack of education about their care. These existing problems were made far worse by the pandemic, as evidenced by the countless stories nurses have told over the past year and the experiences of nurses shared in our State of Nursing in Massachusetts survey. In addition to exacerbated staffing problems, hospitals continue to close essential services, restricting access to patients and leading to more emergency departments boarding of patients, and continue to provide lackluster or even decreased support to frontline healthcare workers. We have seen hospitals try to reduce or penalize sick time use, cut holidays, restrict overtime pay, and offer wages that are not competitive, do not value the dedication of nurses throughout the pandemic, and contribute to major recruitment and retention problems. As I stated, I will have provided the link within my written testimony, and you can get the full results of that survey in more detail. The nurses from all types of healthcare settings were involved in the survey, including teaching hospitals, community hospitals, nonhospital settings, and non-direct patient care. A plurality of nurses who responded worked in hospitals, and most were not Massachusetts Nurses Association members. Among the nearly 20% of nurses who contracted the virus, 76% said they had definitely or probably acquired it at work, which corresponds with studies showing that a lack of proper personnel, personal protective equipment has made healthcare workers more at risk for the infection. The survey shows that during the COVID-19 pandemic, nurses experienced a major downturn in patient care quality in Massachusetts hospitals as troubling trends such as unsafe patient assignments and diminished time with patients. It is clear nurses want real solutions that make lasting improvements to patient care and nursing conditions. In the written testimony, you'll see our solutions listed are written in the written testimony, focused on legislation. But I would add, our M&amp;A members are fighting for safe patient care and access to care for all people in their contract negotiations and labor management meetings, and as in the case of St. Vincent nurses in the streets. I can confirm that M&amp;A is steadfast in our position that healthcare is a fundamental human right. Keeping yourself or your family safe and healthy should not depend on the color of your skin, your gender, your sexual orientation, your job status, where you live, or the amount of wealth you have accumulated. And with that, I will conclude my statement.
Thank you so much, Diane. And is there any member of the panel that wanted to respond to Diane? As we've done in past town halls, certainly, folks are welcome to respond, and or if there's any questions that folks want to answer, feel free to jump in. Anybody on the panel want to respond to Diane? Council President Williams?
Hi, Diane. Thank you for your testimony. I just want to first say that my mom is also a registered nurse, and her name is Diane. So I think that what you're saying is it's a travesty in some places how our nurses have been treated. And I just appreciate, you know, you working in the Massachusetts Nurses Association, working with the City Council to submit letters that we've, you know, of course, signed on to advance, you know, which is just humane practices, right? For those that are at the front lines dealing with the pandemic and of course, that are very susceptible to catching the virus and bringing it home to their families. You know, if we should be looking out for anyone, it's nurses first. So thank you for sharing that, and please continue to share with us how we can help you as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else want to respond on this particular item? This particular testimony? Seeing that, I would just say, Diane, on that myself, thank you so much for being here and for representing nurses. I know, you know, we've been on the front lines together, fighting for nurses. And, you know, I think that the key here is to think about the fact that the nurses have been the backbone of the response to COVID-19 within our healthcare systems. If it wasn't for the work of nurses in our community, we'd be in a very different place today than where we are. And so we certainly will continue to stand with you. Please, as the President said, continue to keep us informed on how we can support you, and I will circulate that testimony that you had submitted around to all of the councilors. We do appreciate your work and the work of all your colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Diane. Again, if you have anything you'd like to share, whether it's testimony or just, yeah, all, you know, testimony comes in many forms. So we do hope folks will share their experiences, even if you don't have a particular ask behind it. It really helps us to know what's been going on in the community and will inform the work we do in the months ahead on recovery. So if you just raise your hand in the queue, we'll bring you in. And the next person with their hand raised in the queue is Juan Latorre. Following Juan Latorre, we'll have Martin Miller. Juan, it looks like you're on now, so you can go ahead and unmute and turn your camera on if you'd like, and we'll hear from you at this time.
Good evening, Counselor Letterman. Juan Latorre here, 122 Forest Hills Road in Springfield. Good evening to the council and members of the administration. Thanks for hosting this virtual town hall. My question is related to the American Rescue Plan, and in particular, I'm looking for some creative ideas from both the City Council and the city about our path forward financially. I reviewed the multi-year financial plan for the city, and based on that document by fiscal year '25, the projections show, I believe, roughly a $35 million shortfall between revenue and expenses for the city. We've also got a couple of challenges with the city. I think one is, and this is experienced nationally, it's very difficult to purchase a home right now. We're seeing all over the country residents trying to buy homes that are needing to pay $20,000, $30,000 over asking price, sometimes in cash, which is not obtainable for most citizens. I'm sure you would agree. It's very difficult, you know, to do business in any city, and not all businesses survive. But Springfield has the fourth-highest commercial real estate rate in the state, which is a challenge for our small and medium-sized businesses. And then with kudos to Counselor Tim Allen, I know there's still a lot of work to be done, although a lot of work has been done regarding our shortfall with our pension funding. And it looks like everyone's doing great work with the 9% increases each year. But from a dollar's perspective, that'll only continue to grow until we get back to, you know, fully solvent on that fund in about, I think, 13 years or so is what we're targeting. So we've got a lot of financial challenges, and I, you know, we've got this, as you mentioned, Counselor Letterman, this once-in-a-generation, you know, windfall of money coming into the city. Not everything I've talked about can be directly impacted with the money that is coming our way, but I'm sure there are a lot of indirect ways in which we can approach some of those challenges. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on these issues, and I, again, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Latorre. TJ, do you want to give a sort of initial response on that? Because we just held our first budget hearing of the year, and I think, you know, we're starting to see some of the ways in which the American Rescue Plan already will impact cities' finances, both in this fiscal year and, you know, in terms of setting us up for future fiscal years. And that's also, you know, the purpose of, or some of the purpose of tonight is to hear from folks about how they've been impacted and how we can make sure that, you know, we don't only spend this money, but really truly invest it in a meaningful way. So TJ, do you want to maybe start off on that? And then any other counselor that would like to jump in?
Sure. So, Jay, any other questions? You know, this is something exactly what we want is feedback from the community. We know that the $93.8 million can be transformative. We know we need to be strategic. We know all the areas in which we can use it. As you mentioned, we cannot put it directly into pension or into the ability to produce taxes, but we can get creative. And by that, I mean, the city has gotten creative with how we manage through the pandemic. With the schools being closed, we chose not to pay for services not rendered, like other communities have. That's allowed us to generate free cash, and free cash comes by a year-end surplus approved by the Department of Revenue. And that is unattached to anything, so that's where the creativity can come into it. In addition, we've been able to leverage FEMA reimbursements, leverage reimbursements, as Tim Sheehan spoke about, from, or not reimbursement grants, rather, from CDVG and those other funding avenues. So our goal is to be strategic. Our goal is to help the residents and the small businesses and the nonprofits to the extent we can. We're still working through all the regulations, the 150 pages of the regulations that's provided by the Department of Treasury. Um, we know there's some vague guidance, which is a good thing, but can also be a bad thing. So, uh, we're just going to try to make sure that we can. Uh, spend the money and not have to worry about, uh, callback provisions or recruitment from, um, the government, you know, three, four, five years down the road.
Thank you, TJ. Um, any other counselors want to, uh, perhaps, uh, jump in on this particular item of conversation? Counselor Allen?
How did you know?
I saw you unmute.
I was just trying, okay. Um, I was just trying to find the raise hand thing. Um, I think, you know, one of our key things is to get people back on their feet economically and doing what government can do to position that for people. Uh, so I would, you know, think that we would be talking to Tim Sheen, who's on this call and think of the ways we can invest in small business. Uh, through grants, through loans, whatever the right thing is, um, to put, you know, encourage, uh, people to get into business. Encourage people who are already in business to get back in it if they're, if they took a hit, uh, during the, during the pandemic, which. And I'm sure many of businesses did. It seems to me that that's, uh, in, in terms of services for people that they can build on to improve their lives, not just now, but in the future. I would say we would be talking about, uh, at least talking about, uh, investment in businesses and in people to start businesses. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Any other counselors that wanted to jump in on this? Counsel Williams?
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'll just say very briefly, you know, that's, you, you raised a great point. And, um, I think it's actually one that I, I had actually touched base with TJ on in regards to, you know, uh, anything related to the first time home, homeownership. Uh, which is a great need in the city of Springfield. I, I can remember writing grants for, uh, wayfinders formerly known as HAB Housing. And seeing the impact that had, um, played, it, it, it just, you know, there's, there's no words that I can put to it. Um, setting folks up, uh, to purchase a home, to build that equity, to then, um, hopefully, you know, pass it down to, to their family, uh, and, and due time. So, um, I think that's certainly a, a, a high, a high priority. I, in property taxes, you know, I, I raised that with TJ as well. I don't know if anything can be attributed. But, uh, you know, if there was a, some mitigating relief for property taxes as that has risen, um. Um, in, in the last few years, uh, you know, that, you know, with the relationship that folks have to pay, you know. When you include businesses, you know, they share that burden. So, you know, if there's, there's relief there, that would be, that would be great. Just getting the biggest bang for our buck. Um, and, and helping as many folks as we can, um, but while realizing that the large ticket items, you know. Might be, uh, worth the investment, but analyzing that at the time when the regulations are released, I think will be. Appropriate. So I appreciate you raising that. Um, but homeownership and, uh, property taxes and rent, you know, rent assistance and things of that nature. That help folks stay in homes and stay in their, their dwellings, I think is, uh, the right tone we should be setting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, did you want to comment on this?
Thank you. Um, just in regards to housing, uh, increasing property values isn't necessarily such a bad thing. Um, but obviously, you know, w- we're looking at all of the city's housing programs. In terms of how we provide assistance to those first time home buyers and responding to the, the market conditions as they've changed. Uh, over the course of the past year and a half, two years, um, and understanding, you know, how best to meet those needs. Um, and that came up in a discussion, you know, it's an ongoing issue and we talked about it, uh, with the housing staff, uh, today. And with regards to, uh, the small business assistance, uh, clearly that's part of the whole stabilization strategy. Uh, we, we, we recognize that there still is tremendous economic need, uh, within the small business community. And, uh, we need to, uh, uh, address programming that can meet those needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Latori, for your excellent question. Um, we hope you can continue to engage around that particular topic. It is very important. Um, at this time, uh, we're going to move to our, our next, uh, hand in the queue and that hand is, uh, Martin Miller. Following Martin Miller, we'll move to Ethel Everett, and we have other folks lined up as well, so we'll keep going. I do just want to say, uh, before Mr. Miller begins, um, I do see that we have some folks that have put questions in the Q and A box. Um, and so we'll, uh, move to those if we, uh, at the time that we, uh, exhaust folks who have their hands raised in the queue. Or if anybody who entered a Q and A question would like to ask it out loud, um, we'll move to them, uh, if they'd like to raise their hand. Uh, Mr. Miller, Laura's yours.
Thank you very much. Um, good evening, everyone. I want to thank the city council. And the city administration for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm the president of New England Public Media and prior to the merger of New England Public Media, we were New England Public Radio and WGBY. Both original incorporators of the Springfield Cultural District. The creative economy is nominally composed of members of the Springfield Cultural District and Springfield Cultural Partnership. It includes for-profit film, architecture, design companies, fashion, food, cosmetology, technology, photography, makers. Computer gaming, entrepreneurs and creative thinkers who develop, create and sustain the work of these creative industries. And this is not an exhaustive list. Cities which were in decline have recovered because of investments by their city in the creative economy. Worcester, Providence, East Hampton, Pittsfield, Northampton come to mind, but there are many, many others. Is Springfield prepared to invest in an office of creative economy? In my humble opinion, a small investment would generate millions of dollars in revenue for the city. And more than pay back the city for such an investment. And it would spur people to move into downtown Springfield. But don't take my word for this. There is a lot of research available to support this type of investment by the city. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Miller. I, I certainly have, uh, some thoughts, but do any other counselors want to, uh, start or any members of the administration, uh, in response to Mr. Miller at this time? So certainly, I, I want to thank you for, for coming testifying and this is, you know, one of the big pieces we're really interested in hearing from folks is, you know, how can we? How can we come back better, um, than we were before the pandemic? Uh, and so I guess the question, one of the questions I would have, I definitely think it's a great idea. How, how would you view that interacting with the, um, the cultural district as it exists today? And I know, you know, some cities have kind of done, they've done more in-house cultural programming and, and, and cultural planning. Um, and then others have invested more in kind of like an independent nonprofit, which is sort of what has happened here, um, thus far. So how, how would you see those two entities interacting and, and complementing one another?
Well, I think that the, uh, cultural district and the cultural partnership are just one piece of this. Uh, that's why. I wanted to list all the other businesses that really fall under the creative economy. Of course, we play. A role in that and we would want to coordinate our activities with a city office. Um, if one were to be created, but I think what an office can do is look at not only. The arts and cultural organizations that are part of the cultural district and the cultural partnership, but look at all of these industries as a whole. And look at how they can interact with each other and how they can, uh, cooperate and collaborate with one another. To create a vibrant downtown where people want to come on a regular basis. Uh, to a safe environment and start to occupy and live in downtown Springfield. So it, it all works together, but I think one central funded city office. Uh, coordinating all of that and, and working with all these groups. Uh, the collective effect of that, I think would be very significant in terms of revenue for the city of Springfield. And create, um, and cause more local businesses in all these categories to want to. Come to Springfield and, and start, you know, a lot of small businesses that way.
Excellent, excellent. I think it's very valuable. I, I would love to follow up with you about that. Um, and, and talk a little more about some of the examples in other communities and maybe we could facilitate, uh, through the appropriate committee. Um, you know, in a conversation specifically on that and how it could factor into the recovery. Um, I see Counsel Edward has his hand up. Counsel Edward?
Uh, yes, to the point of, that was just made, I was hoping that perhaps, um, Mr. Sheen could speak a little bit about the proposed overlay district. Because from my understanding of what we are considering with that legislation. Would encompass much of what he's talking about, the viability of downtown, the increased traffic. And some, the things that would draw people to the area. I know right now, um, under consideration is a significant. Housing, home on or occupied, uh, development along Lower Central Street, just two houses up from Main Street. And, um, so if, if, if it's appropriate with Mr. Sheen could just maybe kind of articulate the relationship with what was just spoken of. To that proposed, uh, overlay district.
Well, Tim, you want to chime in on that before we move to the, a next testimony?
Sure. I, I think that if there were such an office that was to be created, uh, the overlay district is dealing with the geography in and around. The casino and the convention center. Um, and obviously that's the heart of downtown. Um, so I, I'm sure that any office. Uh, that would be created, uh, to address these issues certainly would impact that area. Um, I do think that there, there, there's a pretty good flow of communication. Through the OPEC office and the, the various independent art organizations that are within the, the city. And it maybe i- it's more, uh, a, a, a sense of elevating that up. Uh, 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 and, and bringing resources to bear with it. Because that communication, uh, and ongoing exchange, um, uh, i- is certainly there from an economic development standpoint. Um, I, I think the issue is, is bringing a spotlight to it, uh, and directing it probably a little more. Um, uh, uh, and, uh, I, I, I certainly, you know, would, uh, support something like that. Because I think, uh, the arts are critically important to economic development in general.
Thank you so much, Tim. Mr. Miller, thank you so much for, for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. I will, uh, we have your info through the registration. So I will, uh, certainly follow up with you, um, to perhaps coordinate a, a meeting specifically on this in the future.
Happy to do so. Thank you for the information and your interest.
Thank you. All right. Um, we will move now to our, our next guest, Ethel Everett, who will be followed by William Dabila. And, um, again, I do see we're getting some Q and A comments, so we will address the Q and A comments. Um, you know, if, as we exhaust, uh, folks who have their hands raised in the queue, or if you have issued a Q and A comment. Um, and you would like to bring it, uh, live to the virtual town hall, please feel free to just raise your hand and we'll, we'll go through in the order that they were raised. So Ethel Everett, uh, will be our next, uh, guest. Do we have, uh, do we have Ethel in yet? One second. All right, we should have Ethel. It's like we just got Ethel with us. Ethel? Feel free to, oh, there you are.
Oh, very.
Laura's yours.
My apologies. Let me take this background off first. Um, thank you. Thanks for having me. Um, I'm, my name's Ethel Everett and I'm a social worker for the Department of Children and Families. And also a member of the Western Mass Area Labor Federation. But, um, I really wanted to ask the question. As a, someone who's lived in Springfield, particularly all my life, who's gone to public schools in Springfield, who has children gone to public school in Springfield. And I, um, are really concerned about investing in our children's, um. Athletic ability to just be able to perform. There's about five public schools in, public high schools in Springfield, and we have one fully functioning athletic field. Um, and through this pandemic, um, we've been, we've seen that our children are able to, um, just be able to get out to the field. And practice their skill and their sport because of the social distancing that needs to happen. Um, and this has been in Springfield since I've been in high school, which was well over thirty years that we've only had one field. And right now, Central is the, um, only field that the kids have to go to. So when we're thinking about sports, um, it's. It's not helping them to be able to exercise and be out and be fully involved in athletic sports. Because they have to come in at different times. We have one track, one football field and five schools need to be able to be there. Where you have kids that are trying to, you know, perfect their skill and their sport. And they don't have a facility that is fully functioning for them to be at. Um, it's, it's a shame and, and this has been going on forever. And before, back in the day, you know, we had the one football field at Putnam. Putnam got rebuilt. They didn't get a, a fully functioning athletic field. Now all the kids have to converge at Central. And we need to really invest in our children. We talk about Prime Minister, but we don't give them the outlet through the school to be able to get involved in things. And, you know, teachers and coaches are trying to pull kids in, but then we don't have the facility for them. So my question is, what is Springfield going to do to really invest in our children and the, all the talent that we have in Springfield? Um, to be able to have a facility that's going to meet their needs for all the schools and not all the kids converging onto one school.
Uh, thank you so much, Ms. for, for being here and for, uh, for your advocacy. I see TJ has his hand up and, and Pat's got his camera on, so we'll, we'll start with them and then. Move through. TJ, did you want to, uh, jump in?
Yeah, so, uh, definitely, I'll kind of chime in as well. This has been a huge priority for the mayor for the last, ever since, uh. Central field was done and Putnam was built without a field, we've been working hard going after grants, going after funding sources to help to free the cost of a. Full, uh, athletic facility in the sense of, uh, football field, track, all that stuff that, uh, would go. It would be nice to have a second, uh, turf field in the city. Uh, we are actively looking and pursuing that. I know we're looking at a multi-sport complex as well. Um, somewhere in the city as a way to, uh, get our, our athletes and our students and, uh, kids in school, reasons to stay in school. I don't know, Pat, if you want to comment on what we've done.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So when I took over facilities fifteen years ago, when I grew up and went to Springfield. Schools as well, so I share your, uh, your same thoughts. Uh, you couldn't even walk on any school grounds because it, they didn't, um. Mow the, the, their ground. So at least now through TJ, uh, he's given us the resources. So we have regular mowing of our school grounds. We've done our, uh, stone dust tracks over at our, um, middle school levels. And, um, right now the mayor shares your, your concerns. Um, we, we did the central complex over. We've now have an, an active grant in for Duggan Park, uh, or Duggan Field, uh, which is, uh, going to replace that plum field that we lost. With the construction of, of, of the Putnam complex. And we were forced to do an archaeological survey of the property and that's been completed. So right now, we're just waiting here for the federal government. Uh, on the release of those funds, hopefully within the next month. So. Over the next year, you'll start hearing that we're going to be breaking ground for a new complex at Duggan. And just know that we have through, TJ's also done a, a, a great job in getting a capital plan put together for our entire city. So all of those are built into the capital plan and as other resources become available. Uh, we will start applying for those and that's important because if you don't have them in your capital plan, you can't get your state and federal dollars. So please know we, we're aware of it. Um, they, a mayor and the school committee and TJ and the city council have kept the monies coming each year to. Facility so we can at least maintain and mow our fields. And, um, I think they're a lot better than they were fifteen years ago, but we do agree that there's a ways to go and we are searching for those resources.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. Counsel Edward, you had your hand up?
No, Counsel Letterman, that was from before.
Oh, okay. All right. That's all right, Counsel Edward. So thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Everett. Um, we could certainly also connect you with our colleagues on the school committee to talk a little bit more about the programming side. Um, oftentimes when we do, when we have had town halls in the past, we actually have had some school committee members, uh, with us and when we were in person. Although they had, they had held, uh, a similar event of their own recently, but I would, uh, be glad to connect you, uh, with them as well and continue the conversation. We do have your, your email through the registration. Um, so I hope we could reach out to you in the near future, if that all right?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for, for your advocacy and for being here tonight. All right. And so, um, I do want to assure folks, we will get to the Q and As that were written. I know some folks, um, are putting questions in the Q and A. Um, we have, uh, about five more folks with their hands up and then we'll move through and read those questions and respond to them. Um, so at this time, we will take, uh, William Dabila, uh, to join the panel, um, followed by Beatrice Duberry. Mr. Dabila, thanks so much for joining us and at this time you should be able to unmute. And there you are. Laura's yours.
Thank you. Um, I, first of all, my name is, uh, Will Dabila. I'm the executive director of the Children's Study Home. And I wanted to speak really, um, not only as somebody who lives in the city, but who is, uh, the executive director of an agency that serves, uh, a, a lot of children. And families here in the city. We've been around since eighteen sixty-five. Uh, we're actually based primarily in the Mason Square area. We also have programs in the. We're actually based primarily in the Mason Square area. We also have programs in the Berkshires and then on the Cape. We focus a lot on behavioral health needs, special education. We actually run three special education schools. And we are, you know, right now on the front lines. My staff has not had any time off during the pandemic. They've been coming in every day. They've been working with this population. Many of these kids can't afford to have a missed day of school, and they've continued to move forward through all of this. And so my concern is that as we get to the end of this pandemic, we're also seeing a lot of fatigue. Recruiting and retaining staff is getting more and more difficult. It was difficult for nonprofits before this. It's just a lot more difficult now. I know that counselors Gomez and Alan can relate to this. And I just want to make sure that that that's not lost in the discussion that we have behavioral health workers who are, you know, working often for minimum wage, doing some really good work, and they need to be supported. A lot of them are local residents as well. A lot of my staff live right in the neighborhood that they work in. So I I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, between our foster care programs, community-based services, special education schools and residential treatment, we are really beginning to see the wear and tear of of this pandemic, and I don't think that we're gonna come out of it soon. One of my main concerns is also the labor aspect to this. You know, we have, we have a lot of competition out there for really qualified staff, and right now, the unemployment is part of that. It's sort of a unintended effect that we we do struggle to recruit folks to come back into this environment. So I'll stop there. I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys putting this on. This is an important topic. You know, I'm sure I speak for other nonprofits that have been, you know, working throughout this pandemic that we're starting to see a lot of the, like I said, wear and tear of 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 this whole thing. And even when we're out of it, there's gonna be some long-lasting effects. So I I I'm hoping that we can partner with the city, partner with each other and find ways to to come out of this stronger. Appreciate the time.
Mr. Davila, thank you. Thank you for being here, and and I appreciate your testimony. I'm also the the Chair of the Committee on Health and Human Services. And I think that, you know, one of the things that comes to mind immediately is, are you saying that there is, are you anticipating or feeling it's sort of a shortage of folks that are so far qualified also to take those jobs that you're that you're looking to put out? And I see you nodding your head, which I I think we've done some creative things. I know the city's done some creative things already around, you know, identifying, you know, areas where there are jobs available and then putting some dollars behind training and education. I know we've done that kind of more on the technical side before, but I'm wondering if there wouldn't be a way to maybe partner with some of our educational institutions and and try to put some of that behind behind human service employment, which is certainly a rapidly growing field. Does that, is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, I I think that one of the things right now is that we're even paying, you know, hazard pay. A lot of what we've been doing as an industry to get folks to work overnight shifts and a lot of the direct care hours that we need is is outside of what we're funded to to be able to do. So we're really stretching ourselves pretty thin to make sure that our our kids are cared for, that we're in ratio, that we're able to continue to move forward with the work regardless, because we're committed to our children and families. But yes, there's a, there's a shortage of applicants. I can tell you right now that we were constantly recruiting and we are, we are unable to really fill all the positions. And I've spoken to other agency leaders who are dealing with similar issues because the applicants are just not there right now. So I don't think this is gonna change overnight. I know that there's an expectation that in September, things will get better. But I think it's gonna be more of a slow transition back to normal. It's not gonna be an overnight switch. So we're gonna really need to come together in some way to figure out how we, how we're able to maintain our our safety net, which is what we are as social service providers while while things normalize. So I'm happy to talk more offline with any one of you. Again, you know, it's the Children's Study Home, so you can look us up on studyhome.org. I, you also have my information from registration. So I'm happy to discuss this further with anyone.
Thank you. Counselor Allen, do you want to go ahead, and then we'll do TJ and Tim and move?
Oh, yeah. Well, good to see you. Thanks for coming on. You know, we all have heard of the of the problem with with employment in all different sectors at this point, but you really hit it a little harder there than I had thought about. So thanks for for bringing it up. I don't know if there's something that can be done with collaborating between nonprofits and that sort of thing, or whether the Regional Employment Board is involved at all with this and other agencies like that. But I will be happy to give you a call offline, Will.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
TJ and Tim, if you want to chime in quickly, and then we'll move to Ms. Duberry.
Sure. So in the Treasury Regulations for the Rescue Plan, they speak extensively about the need to address behavioral health and issues similar to that was brought up by Mr. Davila. I'm happy to have a conversation and to try to formulate any type of group to talk about how do we do this. I think Tim's gonna say a similar thing on the nonprofit assistance and everything else, but this is something that is hugely important to the city.
All right, Tim?
Yeah, I I I think it is, it's something that we should probably coordinate an offline discussion about. We have a challenge of bringing over seven thousand unemployed people that have lost jobs in the Springfield labor market back to work. And that's gonna be an uphill challenge. And, you know, if you've got positions for them to fill, we need to figure out how to best make those connections. And I think there there certainly is programming around that 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 we can participate with you on, as well as a host of other nonprofits. So I think it's probably just, you know, I I think we probably should have an offline conversation with a host of nonprofits, social service providers who are experiencing the same problem so that we get the 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 right programming in place.
That would be great.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Davila. We'll make sure that folks are in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we'll now move to Ms. Duberry, and so we'll take Ms. Duberry at this time. It looks like Ms. B, you should be able to unmute now and turn your camera on if you would like, and we'll be glad to hear from you now. It looks like you are, you are unmuted now. We can hear you. It says Beatrice Duberry, but I see Mrs. Liz O'Gildy. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, and I received a message that said, start my video, so I clicked on it in anticipation of being called on later. But it looks like this B is ready.
I think we may be having a technical, bit of a technical situation where it it has admitted you. It has admitted a Miss O'Gildy under Ms. Duberry's name. I see a, let me see, I see B Duberry on here three times, actually. Brendan, can you assist us here?
I use Ms. Duberry's link to get.
Oh, I see.
That's what happened.
And now I see.
I'm gonna get off and I'll get back on.
Okay. My apologies for that technical error. So it looks like we have Ms. B Duberry with us now. Ms. B, did you want to share your thoughts with the group?
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes, we're gonna mute.
All right. Yeah, I shared the link, so I think that's probably what happened. So I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. I know that with the COVID relief funds, we've been talking a lot about how we can benefit our residents, which of course is extremely important. But a concern that's been raised often by our older adult population in Springfield has been infrastructure and public safety, in particular lighting. I know you've come to some community advocate meetings that are convened by wayfinders for residents who lived in the Mason Square neighborhood. And they've lifted that up frequently. But can any of these funds be utilized specifically to address some of the lingering concerns we have about streetlights being out? Poor sidewalks. We've got an exhaustive list of residents waiting to have those fixed, bike lanes, and things of that nature. Those are all quality of life issues. You know, our environment and where we live matters. And so historically, I think it just gets overlooked, or Chapter ninety funds are assigned, and it's just not enough. So I'm just curious to know if funds of this nature can be utilized in that way, and if the city has any intention to do that.
Thank you so much for the great question, Ms. B. TJ, I know that the American Rescue Act, it includes language around water and sewer infrastructure and broadband infrastructure. And I also know, I think we're anticipating infrastructure funding coming from a a infrastructure bill, which is being worked on specifically for infrastructure. I spoke with some of some of our federal delegation staff recently, who who anticipated perhaps that could be done as soon as over the summer. But TJ, is there a way for any of the American Rescue Act funds to also be used towards built environment issues? Is there a way that it can be tied in to meet the regulations, or do we know yet?
We don't know exactly yet, but we are planning on doing some infrastructure work as it relates to whatever ends up being allowed by Treasury Department. By that, I mean, they were silent on open spaces, white lanes. They were silent on sidewalks. We got mixed opinions when we asked a question about sidewalks. One person said you can replace old sidewalk, you can build new sidewalks, but you can't replace broken sidewalks. So we're trying to see clarity on on that. As far as streetlights, that is something that's, you know, I know it's a pet peeve of the city council of when they're out. We're working actively with them to source to to fix it, but I think I saw in your Q and A that those typically are short-term fixes. I know Council Leatherman specifically is looking into, wants to look into LED lights and better lighting in our neighborhoods. So I would, if I could tie it to COVID, and I could tie it to economic development, and I could tie it to all this, I would say there's a good chance we can start addressing some of these issues with this funding. And if not, we should be having a conversation about the infrastructure bill that that allows us to actually do all of that.
I think one of the things, Ms. B and TJ, that comes to mind, the council had passed a resolution a few years, really at this point, a few years ago, around a lighting audit, which I think might be able to be tied into Echo Dev a little bit in that it would, it would help us on three, three fronts, right? Number one, it would help us just assess lighting in general, even with our current system, because there's definitely some areas that are a little darker than others. But it's, it would also be a good prep for if we do end up pursuing LED conversion, which I'm really hopeful the infrastructure funds might finally put us in a position to do. And third, I think you can tie that to economic development and public safety in that, you know, we know that areas that are not well lit, you know, are 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 going to be less developable. So so I I hope we could continue that conversation perhaps in the Maintenance and Development Committee. And I'm sure Counselor Walsh would be amenable. Ms. B, so we'll, we'll follow up with a specific Maintenance and Development Committee meeting for that, and I really appreciate you coming on. Hopefully, we can see some of the AMR, American Rescue Funds, but if not, we can be prepped strongly for the infrastructure bill. And thank you for all the work that you and and the residents are doing in that regard.
Yeah, and and, you know, I I am speaking as a resident, but also on behalf of residents I engage with, and particularly the older adult population. And unfortunately, platforms like this, they're not able to attend or participate in the same manner. So it's really important that, you know, there's other venues for their opinions to be heard, and I'm glad I was able to at least lift that up. So thank you for the.
And we'll certainly be looking forward to holding events like this again out in the community in the very near future, which is certainly something we've we've been able to do together before.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So much. At this time, we'll move to Ethel Griffin, followed by Roberta Kilken. So we're gonna go ahead and bring Ms. Ethel Griffin on to share her thoughts with the with the committee. Oh, and we've also been joined, I just saw we've been joined by Ward Force City Councilor Mallow Brown. Counselor Brown, thank you so much for being with us. And if you, at any point, you want to just jump in, we would welcome you as well. Ms. Griffin, thank you so much. It looks like, looks like you're with us now on the panel. And so we would welcome you when you're ready to unmute and share your thoughts with the committee.
Me and share video. Okay, good afternoon.
Good evening.
Thank you. What I'd like to know is, I know we can, we, a lot of money is gonna be coming into the city, into the state. And what do we, is any of that money could be geared toward housing? We, as you know, I'm the Program Director for Revitalize CDC. And we, I can say we get from fifteen to twenty calls a day, people who need help with their house, with their homes. And this is seeming to be one area that's not focused on as much as it should. Now, we, we did not shut down during the whole pandemic, this whole time. We worked from home, but we were still out there trying to help people as much as possible. But I'd like to know if any of the money that's coming in would be geared toward housing. Because this is one of the big issues. You know, we talk about our children's health. I mean, when we talk about housing, we're not only talking about the physical house, but we talk about the health of the children. A lot of our, most of our homes are old, and there's a big problem with asthma because the homes are old and and the material that they are, they have in their home is dangerous. So, and with a lot of people out of jobs. So this is where I like to see more emphasis and more money geared toward housing to help people to stay in their home.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. I definitely agree. I want to give some other folks a chance to jump in if they'd like to share their thoughts in response to your question. Any counselors that would like to jump in to share their thoughts in response to Ms. Griffin's question, and I do see that that Tim also has his hand up already. So, Tim, if you want to hop in as well, and then go into Mallow Brown, following Tim.
The answer to that question is absolutely yes. It is eligible. The housing component of the Rescue Plan was almost written prescriptively to align with the city's Healthy Homes Initiative. And we believe that, you know, that funding can align pretty, pretty well with advancing significantly more housing updates and redevelopment of existing housing to make it better and have it better suited for living in the types of conditions that are are warranted today.
Counselor Brown, and Counselor Brown, if you also want to introduce yourself, since you just joined.
Hi, thank you, Counselor Letterman. I'm Council Ward Force City Councilor Mallow Brown. And I want to thank everyone for being here, and I definitely want to say hi to Ms. Griffin, individual who helped raise me. I want to thank you for all the work that you've done in the community. Definitely a great leader, you and your husband. I find what what's happening, even as far as when it comes to state and city funding, with a lot of different organizations and people, it's, they're not getting the information. I find that's where the biggest issue is, because a lot of the programs, they change so many times. And what people don't understand is that there's different different qualifications. So sometimes they might be, they're not as stringent now based on the epidemic. So a lot of times where people weren't qualified for certain things, it might change within a week. Sometimes it changes that quick. So it's important for for people to to pay attention to like the different organizations. Usually, most people, the wayfinders is one. But there are things out there that'll help homeowners also. But unfortunately, I just find that the biggest problem is getting them that information. And I I just think some, we gotta think of some way of even being more aggressive, because I get a lot of calls about from homeowners. And there are programs, they just don't really know that much about them.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Did any other counselors want to jump in for a Ms. Griffin's statement to give a response? Counsel President Williams?
Yeah, I'll just jump in very quickly. Ms. Ethel, always great to see you. And I I just want to thank you for your continuous efforts. I know from, you know, partnerships that we've had with Revitalize CDC and just kind of knowing about the organization and on its face, what it does, home modifications and remodelifications is, is, to your point, a great need in the city of Springfield. Like your Green and Fit days, you know, there's, there's. And like your green and fit days, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of leveraging that, that is done with like, you know, our financial institutions, for example, to part, you know, to make sure that those, the residents have, uh, a place to apply for those type of resources. But that, that money is, is stretched very thin and few far in between. So I, I just want to thank TJ for raising, or I'm sorry, I think it was Tim for raising that, that those funds can be used for that. And we should be certainly more aggressively looking at how they can be used, um, to, to help folks who, like you said, the housing stock is something that should be protected in the city of Springfield. So hopefully, with this thing, it can, it can be, um, done a little bit more proactively.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And Ms. Griffin, I would just add, um, that, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, Council Edwards, Council Brown, and, uh, many of the counselors were on a hearing that we held on the, the recently released, uh, Greater Springfield Housing Analysis. And, you know, I mean, we, it didn't tell us anything new, right? We, we've known that there's been a housing crisis, uh, in the city of Springfield for a long time. And, you know, many of us who have had the opportunity to work with families who have been in those situations have seen it firsthand. Um, you know, I think that, that we can strategically leverage these funds, um, to build up some of what does exist and, and work on some of those barriers that are there. And hopefully Revitalize can be a partner in that. I know, I know you will. Um, so thank you so much for being with us, uh, tonight. Uh, we'll hopefully be able to follow up with some more details, but it's important to have your voice already come into the table, um, and, and being able to be in on the ground floor of these conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. O'Gillvy, I see, I think you're still with us and you hadn't gotten to, um, share your thoughts. Did you want to share, uh, share your thoughts with us at this time? And then we would move to Ms. Roberta Kilkeny. Oh, I think we just, we've lost her. So we'll see if we can come back, uh, to Ms. O'Gillvy if she does want to share, uh, more testimony. Oh, and I see she's come back, uh, with her name now. So we'll, we'll, uh, come to you briefly. Um, and it looks like you're with us, Ms. O'Gillvy. So we'll go Ms. O'Gillvy and then Ms. Kilkeny. So, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. And I would have been happy to impersonate Ms. B. She might not have been so happy, never knowing what comes out of my mouth. Uh, I'm really grateful that this is set up in a way that it's interactive with residents. So I want to thank all who had a hand in making that happen. And I think the questions have been profound, the questions that, and the comments that Mr. Davila, uh, lifted up and Ms. B lifted up, really applied in nonprofits across this spectrum. And it's my hope, my, my questions are around process. Uh, I hope that there is an open and transparent process around the conversations that are going to happen. And that it's not just the big name-known nonprofits that are identified. All of us who run a nonprofit, we are social entrepreneurs. We work as hard, if not harder, than most people who own their own business. And the staff retention is an issue, but we are nimble in a way and able to be responsive in a way that larger organizations are not. I serve as the board chair for gardening the community. I've been in the garden, so this was not a, uh, an advertisement. It's just the work clothes that I wear. And I serve as the chair of the Food Policy Council. And during the pandemic, our two very small organizations created seven new permanent jobs with the lowest paid staff person at seventeen dollars an hour and the highest paid at seventy thousand a year. Uh, we've also leveraged over a million dollars for the city with the Food Policy Council leveraging close to half a million for Springfield Public Schools. And our efforts are often not seen as infrastructure building and capacity building and job creation. And I just want to make sure that the process is open and transparent. This is maybe a once in a generation opportunity. And we should use it as an opportunity to increase equity across the city so that neighborhoods are funded equitably regardless of the domain. These are all social determinative health questions that have been raised tonight, and those are all public health questions. We are known as the sickest city in the Commonwealth by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And it's true, because we have these high rates of diseases that are preventable because they're either food-related or environmentally related. And I'm thrilled that, um, Mr. Sullivan is on. He may remember me. For years, I've been advocating for more ag space. Urban agriculture is the number one mitigating factor against climate crisis. Every time we put something in the ground, we sequester carbon and make our city and surrounding cities healthier. And people like roll their eyes or they pat me on the head and say, nice job. But we have twenty-nine school gardens now and they are all STEM-aligned curriculum-based. Kids are learning science and getting excited about science because of experiences they're having outdoors. Of the twenty-two young people that have gone through gardening the community since I've been there, all of them have matriculated to college. We have seven who have graduated from advanced degrees, all in public health and all in, um, regular health. They're nurse practitioners, everything from nurse practitioners to epidemiologists and training. So you don't know often, sometimes when I see you, I don't mean any of you. We don't know what the possibilities are coming out of neighborhoods. And just as we need to be creative and think strategically about infrastructure in our schools, we need to do that in all sectors and we need to make sure that small nonprofits who do ten times more with a hundred times less have as much access to revenue and support services as others. And that we're really staying cutting edge and understanding that when you build community gardens and you, um, open up urban agriculture, if you look at the history of Somerville, like there's no big silver bullet. We need stuff happening in a number of arenas to turn our city around. I'm born in Springfield. I'm going to be fifty-nine this year. I love this city. We've been kind of in a bad track for about forty-five years. And it's important to tell the truth, not to denigrate ourselves, but so we can look at those places of opportunity that sometimes we just see as places of challenge. Thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's attention and, um, I'm grateful for the open conversation.
Thank you, uh, so much, Ms. O'Gillvy. As, as always, I, I find your, uh, testimony profound and will definitely influence how I think about, uh, these funds going forward. I see Patrick had unmuted, uh, Director Sullivan. Did you want to share some thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to say, great to see you tonight. And yep, it's so proud that you're up to twenty-nine gardens. I, I, I was so happy to play a small role in helping you kick that project off. And let's meet offline. I'd love to give you an update on the Horticulture Center. That's planned for a forest park and how that's going to play across the city. So look forward to talk to you maybe in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much. Are there any other folks that would like to, um, jump in? President Williams?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, Liz, it's always great to see you as well. And I just had a question, um, relative to your point for TJ perhaps, um, around how we can be equitable and making sure if money is going to be available for nonprofits, that it's also available, not just to the larger ones with bigger, you know, budgets, but also the smaller ones. TJ just asked, is it possible, do you know with reg, the regulations that have been released, if it's possible to kind of pull the money a way that allows for nonprofits to maybe access it by way of a proposal submission or whatever the case may be, just so there is that transparency and kind of the, the stipulations are the same for everyone in a way?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question, an excellent, it is a good process. So what I have in my mind, based upon everything that I've read with the regulations, is that we will have an RFP-type process to hit, listen to all the nonprofits that want to submit a proposal on how COVID has impacted them, how they can do job creation, how they can do economic development, all, all, all the things, how they can help with housing. I haven't figured out, I'll probably work with Tim Shin, um, trying to figure out the best process on how to group those together as we come with a, with a strategic plan on how to really start to address all these issues. I mean, these have all been tremendous issues being raised. And, um, our goal is to figure out a process that's open, transparent and, uh, accessible for everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, both. And I think that, that's definitely what we want to hear. So we can continue that, that conversation too, through, through this committee, through finance and, and through the committee at the whole. And, uh, Ms. O'Gillvy certainly will hope to keep you engaged. Uh, so we will, uh, move now, uh, to, uh, Ms. Roberta Kilkeny. And while we bring, um, Professor Kilkeny in, uh, I just want to do a quick time check. It's about eight twenty-four. Uh, we're doing well. We have two more folks with their hand raised in the queue, so we're going to move through those. And then we have a few questions in the Q and A that we'll move through before we begin hearing. Cause I want to make sure, I know some folks might not be in a position to unmute or turn their cameras on. We do want to take those comments as well. Um, so at this time, we'll take, uh, Professor Roberta Kilkeny, who also happens to be my neighbor. Professor Kilkeny, thanks for joining us.
Well, actually, Stephen Howard, who is Mrs. Kilkeny right now.
Also my neighbor, Stephen Howard.
You know what? You were just talking about, uh, the sidewalks. Uh, you, you need to do something about your sidewalk, bro. Anyway, uh, since folks are talking about, good evening, everyone. Stephen Howard here. Uh, since folks are talking about science and opportunities, uh, does Springfield or the state of Massachusetts, uh, have a, engaged with NASA with the internship programs?
I do, I do not know in what capacity that we do that, if, if we do, but please go, go on, sir.
Because, uh, what, what, what is the information I have? You know, they have a STEM program that goes from, uh, that presents opportunities for K through sixteen students. And, you know, the, the, the classes are, you know, these programs are fantastic. High school aerospace scholarships, in-flight education downlinks, micro true nu, neutral buoyancy experimental design teams, minority university research and education programs, Moon to Mars, NASA Community College Aerospace Scholars, NASA Internship and Fellowship. I, I could appreciate folks who would like to make sure that our youth engage in outdoor activities, especially like in sports. But, you know, when, when you look at, uh, recently removed, uh, recently, uh, released movie like Hidden Figures. Yesterday I was talking to a young man, he's about seventeen years old. And we were just kicking it about a movie and he really didn't even have the faintest idea that, you know, blacks played a role that he did in the space program. And I don't want to go through a whole his, history of, of our achievements. But I hope folks don't just focus on sports as a way to get out of, let's say, the lower-class communities. Because as long as our children don't know the history of the accomplishments that's been achieved by people who look like them, then they tend not to aspire to get to those levels of education. And since these, since NASA has these programs, I mean, uh, I was watching Bloomberg and a football player, a professional football player is involved in a NASA program. And he was trying to recruit folks to get in, because as he said, he didn't even know it existed until late, later on in, in his life. He's still playing, playing ball. And the lack of, like the Bible says, you know, for the lack of knowledge, my people are destroyed. I mean, if the young folks don't know that these programs exist, how could they even think of getting involved with it? That's the reason I was asking, is Springfield or Massachusetts involved with NASA, especially in their stems programs? And if not, could, uh, some committee be, uh, be formed to deal specifically with this? Because I don't think that sports is the only way out of, you know, the, the hood when there's so many advanced programs out there, even Harvard University. They, they have scholarships, pro, scholarship programs for, uh, for especially black and brown people. How many know, how many people know that? You know, so that's, that's, that's my statement for tonight. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for taking my call.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. We'll certainly follow up, uh, with our school committee colleagues and the superintendent about that program in particular. And, uh, make sure that we're able to follow up with you about, uh, whether we're engaged with it or if not, how we might be able to, uh, become engaged with it. Appreciate it. And I'll see you probably very soon. Um, so we have two more folks in the queue and then we'll move to the Q and As and, and prepare to wrap up. Uh, so we're going to take it this time, Muriel Holloway, followed by, uh, Roberto Nieves. And so we'll take a Muriel, uh, out of the pan, out of the attendees and into the panelist section at this time. And we will, uh, look forward to hearing from her. And it looks like we do have, uh, Muriel Holloway in now. So Ms. Holloway, at your convenience, you can unmute. And if you'd like, you could turn your camera on, uh, but that's up to you. And we'll look, uh, hand the floor over to you at this time. Oh, it looks like you're, uh, still muted. I apologize. There you go.
Wow. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you. It's been a while because of, you know, the lack of access to meetings, et cetera. So having received the invite, Mr. Letterman, for today's, um, uh, meeting, I am delighted. Um, and I think, as I understood the guidance from the individual, uh, from you, you're focusing on, um, monies relative to the COVID, um, situation, the pandemic monies around that. If I'm, if I'm off key, then you'll have to let me know.
We're certainly happy to hear, hear anything you'd like to share with us about really any topic in the city, but we're thinking about pandemic recovery.
Yes. Okay. I am delighted that you said that to me because I was planning, Mr. Letterman, to reach out to you because I have a situation in the city that I want you to help me to address. It's relative to, uh, and I think Mr. Sullivan was on, is he park department person?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, wonderful. I was delighted when I saw him and I, and I heard him, uh, speak earlier. So I kind of stuck around, even though I'm supposed to be at another meeting, I stuck around for this opportunity. Um, there is a section, um, of, of the city, of, of the street of a, of a sidewalk that's embanked and there, it, it's, it's fenced and it's never kept, uh, up. I, I was planning as, this morning, as I went walking, I was planning to take a picture to send it to you and ask you if the park department would be willing to address that. It's a beautiful area that's an elevated sidewalk. There's a fence. The fence is broken. Uh, it's just been that way for a couple of years or so. It's never kept up properly. It's, um, it's stoned area and trees and everything has just been allowed to grow up in it. Um, one day I was walking and I saw a couple of ladies out doing some, some cleanup kind of stuff. And I said, oh my gosh, whom should I talk to? And they said, we only work on, on park stuff, but because this area is, I was across, it was on, um, White Street, uh, uh, over there. But anyway, my question is, how do I get that addressed? That's, that's just what I need to know. Because as we walk in the community, we'd like to see what we want to represent Springfield. So just give me some guidance. I'm taking this opportunity to, uh, to do, to, to reach out.
For a certain, for a certain Ms. Holloway, and it's great to see you. Uh, can you just tell us again exactly where that is?
Okay, it's on Cooley Street. Um, between Allen and the East Long Meadow line, but it's right on Cooley Street. So it's beyond the intersection of Allen and Cooley.
Right. So great to see you today. And, uh, what I'll do is I'll drive by there on my way in tomorrow and we'll determine the ownership of the land that abuts the sidewalk. If it's city-owned, we certainly can get right in there to maintain it. If it's privately owned, we can certainly at least clear the public way. Um, and then we would contact the landowner to see what we can do to work with the landowner.
It's actually not, it's, it's not in, this is the city stuff.
All right. So what, what I'm also going to do, I'm going to give you my email if you don't mind.
Thank you.
And then you can give me, so I'm, uh, P. Sullivan, S U L L I V A N, at SpringfieldCityHall.com. Send me an email with your phone number and I'll be happy to follow up with you.
Oh, thank you. I'm so delighted that.
Anytime.
You're going to respond. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway. All right. Our last person with their hand raised in the queue is, uh, Roberto Nieves. Uh, so at this time, we'll have a focus move Roberto Nieves over, uh, into the panel. And we will hand the floor over to Mr. Nieves and hear from him. And then we will just, uh, take the Q and As, um, from the chat so we can make sure that those voices are heard as well and, and move towards our close. Mr. Nieves, it looks like you're with us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I really appreciate the, the time. I really want to, uh, go back to something that, um, uh, Nurse Diane said and Dr. Davida said regarding, uh, healthcare. We, before COVID, healthcare was already in a crisis situation. And since COVID, we have asked nurses, E M- And since COVID, we have asked nurses, EMTs, and behavioral health professionals to do even more than what's been expected. We, right now, across the board, and these are our partners, we've talked to everyone from Chapin to Mason Wright to home healthcare agencies, to BHN, to C HD, we all have staffing shortages in healthcare. The difficult part about filling those positions is the fact that every single one of those positions require a significant amount of training and a significant amount of investment into that training. So I just want everyone to keep in mind that if we can get a little bit of help from that standpoint, National Ambulance, who I work for, we're 425 St. James Avenue. Right now, we can hire 35 EMTs and about 20 chair van drivers. We can't do it because basically the cost is about anywhere from $1,300. CNAs is about $1,200. And we're all partnering up together to try to do as much as possible. I spoke to two healthcare, to home healthcare agencies looking for CNAs today, and we may partner up to see if we can find some way of finding funds to see if we can fill these positions. The other piece of it is that from a behavioral health perspective is not only are we addressing behavioral health and going to make these calls, but we have a lot of folks that are highly stressed out that are leaving an already high turnover rate industry. So if we don't have the backfill and we have the front doors or the back doors open, front door is closing, it's difficult to operate under these scenarios. And I just want to make sure that we keep in mind that, again, we're exasperating a crisis that was in place pre-COVID. And I just want folks to be aware that if we don't start addressing these issues, and it mainly has to do with an investment, we've gone as far as right now having a discussion with the Springfield Public Schools about starting a high school EMT program. So we're in negotiations right now to do that because we just can't get the backfill. So there's jobs, whether it's national, whether it's AMR, which is the two Springfield-based companies. We can hire right now probably about 50 EMTs and probably about 30 or 40 chair van drivers. And that's just us. That's not mentioned in Chapin. That's not mentioned in Mason Wright, 16 Acres Healthcare, and all the home healthcare agencies that are out there that are looking for CNAs. So please keep that in mind because the crisis was bad before and it's just not going to get any better. And we're trying to do as much as possible, working with Mass Hire, registered apprenticeship programs. But they have limited budgets and we're kind of getting caught in that limited budget piece. And we're now trying to write grants for a Commonwealth corporation. We're trying everything that we can to fill these positions. So please keep that in mind that there are jobs out there, but these jobs in healthcare require a certain amount of training. And I believe Dr. David stated that they have a shortage on their side, too. So whether it's nursing, EMTs, or behavioral health, we need help and just keep that in mind, please.
Absolutely. I see Tim's hand. Tim, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, we have started a pilot program with Mass Hires to basically subsidize via grant funding the training for commercial driver license training. And we want to, we've talked with Dave Cruz about expanding that out to other professions that require licensure that are, you know, it may seem like a high barrier in terms of the cost of the person going in, but it's a relatively low barrier to entry profession. And, you know, our thought process is if giving a low, moderate income person the opportunity to get through that training, to get to those types of jobs are absolutely, is absolutely the right way to go. So my expectation is we'll be expanding that pilot out to other licensed professional positions.
And we have worked with Dave Cruz and Melissa Chabelli, who has helped us through our registered apprenticeship program. But I believe they have federal funding and it's limited. So they were only able to provide training for, I think, maybe 20 of our EMTs that are in training right now.
Yeah, we're anticipating on the CD, CDL side that we would have, they, we would be sponsoring 30 students going through that in three stages on an annual basis. So it would be like 90 students.
And I don't want to make this just about EMTs or ambulance. To be completely honest with you, CNAs are a major need. Nursing is a major need. Behavioral health is a major need. It's just an overall crisis right now.
It's looking at that employment picture. If you have to get some type of license or training in order to do it, how can we assist you to get that training and get you into what would be a stabilized professional position?
Thank you.
TJ, did you want to add anything?
Not much more, other than the fact that I'm on the regional or the Mass Hire Board and we spoke extensively about what Tim was just talking about and extrapolating that to all the areas or the industries that need the assistance in hiring. So we are honored, we're aware of it, and this is the time to really, this is a big reason why ARPA passed, the Recovery Plan passed, is to do exactly that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Nieves, thank you so much for coming out and joining us. This is exactly, you know, the type of thing that we need to be hearing about and keeping it at the top of the agenda. So certainly, you know, we'll stay in touch and follow up through Tim and TJ. And perhaps also with the Health and Human Services Committee, maybe we could put everybody in one room and talk a little more.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that looks like we've moved through all the folks with their hand raised in the queue. We do have some Q and A questions. So I do want to move through those briefly because I do want those voices to be heard. Some of them, I think we have answered. I see the first one here is from Ms. B. Dooberry. She had come on and testified. Here's another question. It says, can we use the CARES Act funds for municipal broadband so that our Springfield schoolchildren have access to the internet? TJ, can you talk a little bit about the work that's been done through SPS to make sure that students did have access to the internet throughout? What that might look like in the future?
So I'll answer the question found in like three parts. One is right now, the city has built a metro microfiber initiative to go around the entire city with fiber to get that. So that's the foundation of any type of broadband approach. But the school department specifically went to a one-to-one where each student got a device, a laptop if you're first grade through high school, a kid got through high school, and then an iPad for pre-k. And then for households that had trouble getting internet access, they were able to get a cheaper version of Comcast through the agreement we have with Comcast. For those that still couldn't get it, we gave them a hotspot for them to be able to connect. We recognize that that's a challenge, especially in times of our learning remotely. And then the school department's working on some pretty neat stuff of actually, I don't want to get too far ahead of the school department, but that is going to have Wi-Fi citywide at some point. And then also distant future of putting it on buildings and everything else. So for our students to make sure that that is not a barrier that they're facing.
Thank you so much, TJ, for that insight. And also, I know recently we engaged around the idea of doing a study for municipal fiber, which seems like the administration is open to, which we're excited about as well in terms of the feasibility of that in the future. So thank you for the question to whomever put that out. I see some more questions here from folks that actually ended up coming on and sharing their thoughts. I do see one question here from, that was not addressed, which is from Karen Lee. It says, wondering thoughts from counselors on the current legislative bill in Boston on pilots. If passed, municipalities would be able to collect 25% from tax-exempt institutions with over 15 million in assets. Those funds could be used in the community or for budgetary purposes where neighborhoods have been impacted, or maybe to reduce the residential rate once the large institutions begin contributing a fair or equitable share to the budget. So certainly, folks can look at that bill that Karen has brought forward. It doesn't have a bill number, but it is a pilot bill in Boston. So we'll find out what that is. Also, some submitted via the Q and A from Carla Fitch Mitchell. Says, my name is Carla Fitch Mitchell. I'm a member of the Western Mass Area Labor Federation and president of Local 17, supporting DGS employees throughout Western Mass, seeking support for Human Service Workers Bill H4745 and Bill H3702. So thank you, Carla, for submitting that. And we will, we will look at those bills as a council. And then I see a question that was submitted by Ms. Kilkeny or Professor Kilkeny, or perhaps Stephen separately, which was, how can small businesses, nonprofits, and cultural organizations get support for collaborations to establish cultural centers in the various neighborhoods so as to provide affordable programs and learning opportunities? And I think we've spoken about that a little bit already today, but certainly we can appreciate that that came up again and we can explore that more in the future. So that seems to bring us to the conclusion of what folks have submitted thus far. Do any of the counselors or folks on the panel, we still have a number of folks in attendance, but before we close, did anybody want to share any closing remarks before I close us out?
All right, well.
Go Counselor Allen and then President Williams.
Thanks, Counselor Letterman. Great job, Marcus and Jesse for setting this up and Brendan for helping Focus Springfield for helping. I personally got a lot of information that I didn't have before and insights and made a little list of things to work on. And maybe we can debrief tomorrow a little bit, a couple of us on how we go forward. So we're not all doing the same thing, making the same calls. But thanks to the public for participating and sharing your ideas. And it was very insightful. Thank you very much.
President Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly echo everything Counselor Allen said. I think this was super insightful and I have my list of notes here. Because we ask counselors and elected officials that represent you all, you know, that's our, that's our source of information. And the advocacy around that and raising it to the forefront is critical to us. So this is honestly one of the best town halls I've been to. And I think it was around kind of just a culminating issue of receiving, as we've said several times throughout the night, an unprecedented amount of money that we need to figure out how to use. So it's going to take all hands on deck to make sure that it's spread equitably throughout the city of Springfield. So I'm appreciative of everyone that joined, the residents that join, business partners, factions of the city, as well as my colleagues and local government. And I'm looking forward to the conversations to commence.
Thank you so much. I missed one question from Brendan Holland. And since Brendan was so influential in helping us to run tonight's meeting, I don't want to miss it. Which he wrote, with more folks outside on bikes due to the pandemic, cyclist fatalities doubled in 2020, the culmination of a 10-year consistent rise since 2010. This was all the amount of cars on the road, this was with the amount of cars on the road halved. All studies show that painting a bike icon on the shoulder and calling it a bike lane doesn't actually do anything to improve cyclist safety. What are the city's plans to modernize our bike infrastructure and keep our citizens safe? Does anybody want to respond to that particularly before we finish closing out? I'm happy to just say, certainly, you know, I appreciate the question. And, you know, I think we have some excellent organizations in the city like Walkbike Springfield that are at the table regularly advocating for the complete streets model. I think we've made some progress in that regard, but there's certainly more work to be done. And I think that the infrastructure funding that's going to be coming in is going to be influential or instrumental in getting that piece done as well. So certainly appreciate the testimony from our friend Brendan at Focus Springfield. Was there any other counselors or panelists that wanted to just share some closing remarks before I begin to close us out? Seeing none, I'll just say thank you to everybody who joined us tonight, both to provide testimony, to watch and to join the panel. You know, I was saying to Tim Sheehan before we got started, you know, about a year ago, we held a town hall really in kind of the height of the pandemic and before we knew a lot about what was going on or what resources were going to be coming. And, you know, I think one year later, to be here tonight, talking about such a hopeful recovery is really an incredible thing to behold. And so I'm really honored to be able to have engaged in this conversation. We will definitely continue to have these conversations as we go forward and to engage the public in these conversations. I always say, you know, I've seen it time and time again, never count the city of Springfield out because the people of Springfield will get up and surprise you. And I think that's what we're going to do in this pandemic recovery. So really appreciative to fellow counselors, members of the administration. Looking forward to engaging again and to all the folks that are at home watching. Please share with your friends and neighbors our contact information if they'd like to submit some testimony. And also, I know the Commissioner Colton Harris couldn't be here. But I do want to share that there are three vaccination clinics happening this week in the city that folks can take advantage of. So please tell your friends, family, and neighbors, May 26 at BHN, May 27 at Brightwood Health Center, and May 29 at Boland School. And those all have appointments available on the city website and also are accepting walk-ins, as is the Eastfield Mall. So we're not quite through. We still need to make sure we're getting out there and protecting our family and communities. Everybody, thank you so much. And at this time, we will adjourn the town hall.
Thank you.